Hey, good morning, everyone. Welcome to sunny Southern California. I guess it could be worse. We could be in Buffalo, New York. Like taking our shirts off, some of us taking our shirts off and watching a football game. I ain't taking my shirt off. I'm gonna call the study session for December ninth, order for the Costa Mesa Sanitary District and ask the clerk for a roll call, please.
Thank you. Director Cheyenne Wright.
Here.
Director Nicole Wiltshire.
Here.
Secretary Arthur Perry.
Here.
Vice President Robert Ooten.
Here.
President Michael Schaefer.
Here.
Thank you.
Takes us to public comments. This is the time for members of the audience to speak on items not on the agenda within the purview of the Board of Directors of the Sanitary District. And we have one public comment request. Sue?
I want to say thank you to Director Carol or General Manager Carol for getting the handrails installed in the front. Last time when I brought it up, I thought you guys would just kind of paint it her and I was super snarky that you didn't do it because you were in the process of installing the handrails, which I know in terms of the amount of time it takes to make a purchase in government matters, this was super quick. So I just wanted to preiterate how much I appreciate it as a safety issue and I'm sorry I was kind of crabby last time. But I was out looking city foul and it was pretty cool. And then the other thing I just want to comment, I actually want to thank David in code enforcement. I've had a terrible problem with scavengers on my streets going through recycle bins with trash bags and just going down the street and pulling everything out and take them to the recycle center. And he's made a point to come around when they've been in the area and I have not seen them in several weeks. So it has to have something to do with his visibility and so I was.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we will move to item number, I'm sorry, item number one, City of Costa Mesa Christmas tree and bulky item collection. Marissa, I assume it's yours?
Good morning. Yes, so the board has recently inquired about both Christmas tree collections and bulky items, both as they pertain to CMSD and as they pertain to multifamily bin service customers that fall under the city's jurisdiction. So in response to those requests, Kevin Gaxiola with the City of Costa Mesa has graciously agreed to come and present some information on the city's bulky item and Christmas tree collection processes. And Kevin will provide you with a brief presentation on those items.
Morning, Kevin. Welcome to our board meeting.
Thank you for having me today. You guys are here?
You're good.
Just want to give a quick thank you to everybody for allowing me to be here today. When Marissa and Scott first reached out and asked if I could come to a quick presentation, I jumped at the opportunity. It's not often that you get off trash with people that are actually passionate about some of that. So definitely again for having me.
Was that a reference to my Buffalo Bills? That was yours.
I'm a Buffalo Bears fan, so we're just.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So yeah, I am the Solid Ways Coordinator or Senior Management Analyst over at the City of Costa Mesa for Works Department oversee all things Solid Ways, P and D for building permits. You know, the customer was playing an inquiry. This slide here is just a quick table. Usually what I reference when folks come into City Hall, they're a little bit confused as to what CMSD oversees versus the City of Costa Mesa. So you'll see here, single family residential and all that family of the four units. And this is for some of our newer members. If you're a little confused, CMSD will handle that and CNR and R will be the waste hauler. And then multifamily dwellings of five units or more and then commercial and business accounts are overseen by the City of Costa Mesa. Next slide, please. So it's a very unique system that we have in place here at the city. We have seven franchise waste haulers, which we refer to as a non-exclusive system. Most cities in Orange County have one exclusive hauler for all things waste related. So that can be for single family, multifamily, commercial business, or even roll-off dumpster service. There's actually only three cities in the City of Orange County that operate a system like this. Anybody familiar with the other two? The neighboring cities, Irvine and Port of Point. So other than that, all thirty-four cities in Orange County operate under a single waste hauler. So there's pros and cons to each system in place. As you can see here on the right, this is what's called a split bin from one of our franchise waste haulers where disposal. This, this type of bin is offered by certain haulers. So when you have seven different waste haulers, you're dealing with private businesses who have different capabilities, whether it's staffing, vehicles, or even facilities. Some of these waste haulers have their own privately owned facilities, while some of the smaller waste haulers such as, let's say Holloway Rubbish or Roberts Waste and Recycling, they rely on some of the other haulers' facilities, while materials recovery facilities. The pros to a non-exclusive system is you have flexibility. So commercial business owners or multifamily property owners have free range to sort of shop around when it comes to deciding who their waste hauler's going to be. They can get pricing from one hauler, you know, take that to another waste hauler and say, hey, can you beat this price? With there being seven waste haulers, we've got a good mix of services that can be offered at somewhat a good price. The cons to having a non-exclusive system with seven different waste haulers is education and outreach. The recycling practices are not consistent across all waste haulers. For example, some of those waste haulers may allow for compostable bags to be placed in an organic or other haulers may burn them to have those items placed there. The other is service schedules. You can imagine this takes a toll on city roads and things like that. I already have a business located right here at the Costa Mesa Sanitary District. Somebody right next door can have an alternate, a different waste hauler. That's sort of five days a week. So you've got two different trash trucks driving five days a week down the same road. And most important, I would say is data collection. So we're required by power cycle to submit an electronic annual report. The most fair assumption when we would submit an annual report, it would be collecting data from one specific waste hauler. In this case, we would be getting that data from seven different waste haulers. In addition to the seven waste haulers, we also have two additional waste haulers that provide roll-off dumpster service for construction and demolition or building projects. So in total, we're really collecting data from nine different waste haulers when it comes to gathering information for our trunk and report. Next slide, please. So bulky item pickup and Christmas tree collection. The city in two thousand, late two thousand twenty conducted a study to determine where the majority of bulky items in the city were being generated from. It was determined that districts four and five, otherwise known as the West Side, typically generated the most bulky items. So the city initiated an RFP to get a waste hauler onboard that could provide bulky item collection service. That was awarded as a five-year contract in total to Ware Disposal. So Ware Disposal will service area districts four and five three times a week, six hours per day, to pick up bulky items that are placed adjacent or blocking dumpster enclosures, also things placed in the public right of way, as we'll get touch on next slide. Our street maintenance team also does a good job at collecting items placed in the public right of way. Bulky item collection is also something that property owners are encouraged to negotiate when they set up for service contracts with waste haulers. With there being a free market, the city does not really get involved in negotiation between customers and waste haulers. So it's always encouraged for them to include that, that bulky item pickup service in their contracts.
I have a question. What are these districts? I'm not familiar with this.
City Council?
Oh, got it. Okay.
Yeah. So, so yeah, the downside to it is property owners typically want to pay as least as possible when it comes to the waste disposal service. So they'll try to not include that in their contracts. We did include a clause in their franchise agreements with the cities for the seven waste haulers that they provide two bulky item pickups per year per property with a total of four items. So two items per pickup. Issue with that is landlords, property managers sometimes either don't take advantage of it or they don't want to deal with tracking which units are going to be using the bulky item pickup. As we obviously know, multi-family properties, a lot of turnover, a lot of residents moving in and out, it's like that.
Kevin, do you, do you have any idea or do you guys know what the composition of those bulky items? I mean, that, that just, it just blows me away that they have to do it three times a week.
Yeah. Yeah, it's typically, I would say furniture, mattresses.
I knew you were gonna say mattresses, because that's.
Yeah, as we get to the last slide, I can go and tell us some more that the city is doing to try and solve that issue.
Can I ask a clarifying question too? So because the city focuses on multifamily units, it would make sense that district four and five that have the highest density of multifamily units, that's where you would see the influx, whereas districts one, for example, or even six has more single family homes, which would fall under our jurisdiction for bulky items. Okay. Super interesting.
And Christmas tree collection. So there are some consistencies across all waste haulers. Flock trees have to go in the trash. Unfortunately, they're not considered organic material. Some waste hauler, or most waste haulers would prefer if the tree can be cut down into a piece three feet or smaller, it can be placed in the organic bin, and that's the most ideal scenario. Some of our franchise waste haulers consider Christmas trees bulky items, so that would count against their bulky item pickup. But we do have a couple of our franchise waste haulers that will offer that service till rough, from roughly January, or I'm sorry, December twenty-sixth to January sixteen. And again, with there being seven different waste haulers, the pickup schedules vary, but they will be required to provide education material to multifamily residents ahead of the holiday season.
Wait, sorry, who's required to provide information?
The waste haulers will provide it typically to the property owner or the account holder in that case. So if anybody lives on multifamily property, I would reach out to your property owner or property manager for guidance as to how to dispose of the Christmas trees. The city will also be posting all this information on its website and make that available to Scott or Marissa.
Are we do, is the city doing any kind of outreach to people in multifamily communities?
Not direct multifamily outreach. Most of the time it goes directly to the account holders or the property managers, and it's their responsibility to then disseminate that information to the residents. Next slide, please. So in addition to the bulky item, or the Christmas tree pickup that the waste haulers are doing, the city's street maintenance crew does offer it as a service. We don't really advertise it as a service, but the street maintenance crew, as they're driving down the streets to go to other various jobs, if they see a Christmas tree, they will pick it up. As you can see here, this is a photo taken at our courtyard of items picked up by our street maintenance group. So this is in addition to the items that are being picked up by Ware Disposal. So it looks like this is, they're probably waiting for that roll-off dumpster to get picked up and if you want to be brought back, and then all of that weights will be transitioned to that container and blocked out by Ware Disposal. We go through about five or six of these forty-yard roll-off dumpsters monthly. So it is a big ask of our street maintenance crew to go around and collect these items. But they are aware of after Christmas time that there may be some Christmas trees out in the public right of way, or we may get a call to City Hall or the Costa Mesa three-one-one at. So they are aware of the possibility of having to pick those up and take them over to our green waste bin that's located at the courtyard. And regarding, oh, I'm sorry, the question regarding sort of the composition of these materials, as you can see, it's a little bit of everything. The real big issue here typically is mattresses. Take up a lot of space. They're really heavy. So we recently have had some discussions with the mattress recycling council to see if we can get a system in place where we can even offer a drop-off location for residents to take those mattresses. And the city would then potentially get reimbursed some, some small amount of money, but some big savings would be not having to pay for the disposable feed mattresses. So that wraps up my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. I understand it's a bit of a complex system compared to most other cities, but I'd be answering questions.
I have, I have two. Do you, do you know what the, your diversion rate is or pound per capita? Reports that you have to submit to the state?
Yeah, I believe it's around for twenty twenty-four, it was around sixty-five percent.
And so you have a seventy-five percent requirement under thirteen eighty-three, or at least it's adjusted requirement. Do you think you're going, you, well, are you, are you going to achieve that seventy-five percent?
I think we'll get there with education and outreach and also we did find some issues with reporting from some of our haulers. But I think once we get that cleared up and increase education and outreach and sort of, this being new to the state as a whole, I think we'll eventually get to that seventy-five percent.
Do you, how do you, how do you send out your educational materials?
Yeah, so it's oftentimes done through waste haulers, but the city has done direct mailers. The city spotlight newsletter that goes out four times a year, we do include education information on there. We have webpages that have all of our specific waste hauling information along with service guides from all of our franchise waste haulers as well. We do outreach events. We have the annual birthday celebration at City Hall, which typically there's a representative from CMSD there. And then also we do join the GoExpo event here.
So, so those are all to the multifamily?
Correct.
I mean, those are all to what you, you're responsible for?
Not necessarily. The spotlight, for example, goes out to all residential homes or all homes. The tricky part is you have to keep messaging somewhat generic with there being so many waste haulers. And then also with, with, with the single family homes, it's pretty straightforward considering there's one waste hauler. But what we try to do is direct residents that are living in multifamily properties to our website where they can gather all that information from their specific waste hauler.
I think I talked to you one time, I worked, I'm involved in, with the Friends of the Library and so we have a building at Mesa Verde Library. We used to put out, OC, OC Recycle used to collect three bins of recyclable material and the, and the library had another four bins that they disposed of recyclable material. Now there's one fifty-five gallon bin. So you're missing, we're missing tons of recyclable material. And I think you told me that I should check with the OC library system.
Yeah, so typically with the county libraries, they're leasing those buildings from the city and they're responsible for all utilities. But I'd be happy to look into it and I can get back to you regarding. You said at one point there was additional bins?
Oh, well, there used to be, there used to be seven fifty-five gallon bins that OC's, that OC Recycle would pick up from both the library and, and the Friends of the Library processes. So it's not, it's an opportunity if you want to get recyclable material collected better.
Definitely. Yeah, I'll be happy to look into it and I can get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Any battery problems?
Do we have battery problems?
Are you having problems with batteries? I'm sorry.
Not, not that the city has heard of directly. That's something that I would assume the, the waste haulers would report if they're receiving that type of material or having fires at their materials recovery facilities. We're relatively conveniently located between two household hazardous waste collection centers, the one in Irvine and the one in Anika Beach. And then also we have the OC Recycling Center, which is now open. So I haven't heard of any, any fires to it.
Okay, I know our hauler had expressed or they've talked about truck fires.
Yeah.
I mean, and that could be probably the worst case scenario. I mean, a fire at a materials facility can probably be extinguished fairly quick. But when they're in a truck, as you well know, they gotta dump it right there in the, wherever they're at.
Yeah, I've experienced, I worked for six-ish years at the county landfills and worst case scenarios, that load gets dumped out of landfill. You know, eight gallons of trash potentially that could burn.
All that methane gas and, yeah, okay. All right. Other question? Anybody else for, for Kevin?
Yeah, can we go back to the, the units that are four more units? Can you tell me again how, so they have to contact, the residents in four more unit properties have to contact their property manager?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so.
How do they know they have to contact their property manager?
Well, also the property manager within fourteen days is supposed to be notifying all residents of sort of the waste disposal practices at that specific property.
Are you ensuring that the property managers are doing this?
So we have started implementing a process where any multifamily property owners, when they get their business license through Costa Mesa, they're required to attest that they understand all requirements. If property owners are not receiving that type of education material, then they're, they should be reporting that to City Hall and we can reach out to the property.
I just feel like there's a lot that would fall through the cracks there, because I live on Santa Ana. I live in a six-unit property and I'm in district three. And that, that strip, that blue strip is all multifamily properties. I live on Santa Ana and there's a ton of multifamily properties. And so in January, like the street is just full of Christmas trees. And on the side of the street that goes towards Santa Ana, there's a bike lane, but there's no shoulder. And so the trees just go into the bike lane. And so you can see it's probably like a hazard for people who are on bikes and stuff like that. I just feel like the information is not getting to the people who need it. Because my property management company doesn't tell us anything about Christmas tree disposal.
No, I appreciate the feedback and, you know, something we can consider maybe in the city spotlight newsletter, we can put out a message to all residents, letting them know if they live in multifamily properties, if they can reach out either directly to the hauler or they can reach out to the property manager.
Thank you for your presentation. Always love city presentations. And we've been talking here internally about servicing our multifamily homes and renters. And we had a really great presentation that sort of delineated that we do have a lot under our jurisdiction as well. But then clearly, seeing that you guys are non-exclusive and you have so many different providers, I do think it can cause confusion. And so of course, Christmas time seems to be like a popular time to be getting rid of a bulky item. But I'm, I'm really curious to, can you clarify about that two-item minimum that you negotiated and how that came about?
I'm not sure about these agreements went into effect, I believe in twenty twenty-one. I was not with the city at that time, so I wasn't a part of the negotiating group. But yeah, it's two bulky items per pickup with two pickups per year. So it's a total of four items per property. The, that part gets a little tricky is coming up with the definition for property, right? Is it for each unit or is it for a property as a whole? So that's something that we'll definitely be revisiting when these contracts expire in twenty twenty-eight. Because it was brought to our attention fairly recently that that's the language that was included in the contracts.
Okay, that's also really helpful information. So in twenty twenty-one, you said, all seven contracts were negotiated in tandem and are effective for seven years. Is that correct? Eight years? To the end of, for the full year of twenty-eight. Okay, that's really interesting. And then, do you know when, have we always been non-exclusive?
Yes. Yeah, so the three cities in Orange County that have been non-exclusive have been that way for quite some time. With the stringent reporting requirements from the state, it makes more sense to transition to a single hauler. That's something that we haven't began, began to take a look at, see if hauler transition is a touching subject. Not sure if some of you are familiar, there was a neighboring city that went through a hauler transition just a couple of years ago. And they're never as smooth as they intend to be. So I guess in a perfect world, we would have one hauler. It would make everybody's lives a lot easier. But there, like I said, there are some pros. Some property owners love having the non-exclusive system. Those of them will run from hauler every few years just to save some money.
Okay, yeah, that's, that makes a lot of sense. And then can you, so can you elaborate for me when you mean, what you mean by the landlords engage directly with their hauler? And there's a negotiation, can you, like, of the rate or of the amount of times? Can you, can you kind of elaborate for me what that would look like?
Yeah, so typically a landlord will sign a contract with a particular, a property manager will sign, enter into an agreement with a particular hauler. It may be for five years, it may be.
Do they get assigned that hauler or they also have?
With any hauler.
Any of the seven?
Any of the seven.
Okay.
Yeah. But the city doesn't really get involved in the terms of their agreement. So the city doesn't say, for example, you can only have an agreement with them for one year or five years. So the city doesn't get involved with setting the rates, different haulers charge different prices. Haulers may charge a cheaper price if they're already servicing multiple properties on that one street versus if that's the one property they're servicing on that street or that side of the city, then they're charged more.
Yeah, I have a, my, I own a business in Newport and West Side. And so we have two different contracts there. And then I own a multi-unit in Costa Mesa, but it's under, it's only two units. So, or it's about to be three units. So we're just through CMSD. So I feel like I have a bunch of different, and I was a renter for ten years. So I feel like I have a few different lenses into like all the different types of people we service in the city. It's really interesting to hear you talk about the benefits of going exclusive possibly down the road, because I do think it's a really confusing, like bureaucratic experience for our residents, especially renters who aren't as like motivated to jump through all the hoops just to find out how to get rid of a mattress, which is why they just put it outside. And yeah, I would agree. Like, I, I think it would be great to maybe open up a dialogue of like requiring the haulers to send direct communications to the residents, because I think there's a lot of landlords that are just not participating in good faith, whether it's to save costs, which I understand, or it's just, it's just a business for them, you know? And so even for me, when I got my permit to have a, a property, a rental property, I do not recall the boxes that I ticked and, and committed to informing my tenants about, you know? And thankfully, we just live in the same building, so it's easy to communicate updates. But I definitely think that's a point worth exploring of like, how much can you guys sort of draw the line in advocacy for the residents when you're negotiating? Or like, I would definitely say an exclusive agreement would probably just provide a more streamlined experience. And I think even for us, the Sanitary District, taking over multifamilies as a whole, I think would be smart down the road as well, too. So then, if I'm understanding correctly, all seven waste haulers then paid out the city a fee, right? And it's like three percent or something?
No, it's.
Or seven?
A bit higher, a little bit higher than that. And yeah, they pay that on all revenue that they generate in the city.
Interesting.
Do you know what that revenue is?
Off the top of my head, I don't, but it's sixteen percent of revenue that they generate.
You don't know what that grant total is?
I don't. Off the top of my head for, for last year.
Yes, we estimated it was, it could, you guys, if you went exclusive, you could be making four million plus a year. And you're probably not making that now.
Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of factors that play into it, especially with landfill disposal rates likely going up over the next year or so. So it's something we haven't looked into too closely as far as potentially transitioning to a single waste hauler. But yeah.
When you're still with the city in twenty twenty-nine, would you push for exclusive franchise with the city council?
I, I can't say.
I mean.
From an administrative standpoint, I can tell you it's a lot more convenient, right? You're dealing with one waste hauler. You have an issue, a resident comes in on, you know, we don't have to try and figure out who your waste hauler is. We would know automatically who it is. So yeah, stuff for me to make.
I know, I know, I know that. But I think it'd be to the benefit of us citizens, we're all citizens of Costa Mesa. That would go with one hauler, just because of the trucks. Like you said, you got five, seven different trucks going up different days down the streets.
Especially for what you said, for comms and education, like we have the three-card system and we're still just bringing awareness and trying to reach our goals with our residents. And my final thought was I, I love the idea of partnering with a mattress recycling center. Like ideas like that I think are brilliant and could be streamlined if we had one primary partner and then we have more negotiation power as well. So I, I'm really glad that you guys are thinking in that way to like divert to somewhere that can better use this waste anyways, too. So yeah, those are my comments and thank you.
One, I got one more. I like your idea about sending over your information to us for our website. Because people always call us first, you know?
Yeah.
If Scott can simulate that.
Well, adding, adding on to that, there, there must be some opportunities with the use of your educational materials and ours, because we're both trying to achieve, you know, that seventy, mythical seventy-five percent. So I would, well, I would encourage you and Melissa to look into and, and or whoever on staff is creating the educational materials to see if we can benefit each other.
All right, Kevin, thanks. Good present. We really appreciate good presentation and keep up the good work, man.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks. Marissa, thanks for arranging this. All right, let's move to the code enforcement report, David. All right, uh, let's move to the code enforcement report, David.
Morning, Governor, members of, members of the board. Up here, uh, to present my report for the month of, uh, November. This report summarizes major points for three ordinance enforcement topics covering scavenging, graffiti and truck container enforcement. For the month of November, the CMSD Code Enforcement Officer booked with efforts in patrols in various parts of the community. The goal is to identify institutions of scavenging and residential trash carts left within public view. Uh, the month of November, I encountered five scavengers, uh, listed throughout the community. Any questions on that so far?
Any repeats, people even seem to-
None. All these were first-time offenders on different days. Uh, truck container enforcement for the month of November. There were a few customer complaints reported on a CMSD customer, I mean, district headquarters regarding chat, regarding trash carts in public view. The following list of locations where trash cart violations were found and addressed by the courtesy notice process. I wrote 129 violation notices listed by the streets and how many notices were on that street. Any questions on that?
If you encounter or you see a recycled bin that is way overstuffed, cardboard boxes not broken down, do you do anything about those? Yeah, I think that's something we ought to discuss is-
I see cardboard boxes stacked on top of them, like they think that's going to fall in.
They, they put them on top, they put them, they lean them up against the side and, um- You don't expect any of us to say that about Newport. It just, I've noticed it more and more and I'm just thinking your report in December is going to be worse, cause I mean, the only traffic on my street lately has been Amazon and, and that's trucks.
That's true.
Not stopping at my house, I hope, but, um-
That's it.
That's something I think we ought to look at as far as the enforce, enforcement part, you know what I mean?
We can definitely address it with CRNR as well. The drivers, um, typically aren't supposed to pick up carts if they're overflowing just to prevent anything from falling when they are servicing. So they should be leaving those, they should be tagging them, um, but we can definitely address that with them further.
I do like the idea of like maximizing his efforts since he's already sort of patrolling and on the street, giving him sort of the green light of any other possible like positive impacts for code enforcement. If you wanted to like put together some ideas and, um, if we could formally hear them and approve them down the road. That sounds great.
That's it for my report for the month of November. Any other questions?
I like the map view. Thank you.
Yeah, just the comment back to the scavengers. They're generally first-time offenders that you see. So these people who are, might be repeat offenders have either figured out your route and avoid you or you're making a good impression on them and I, I tend to think it's the latter.
Well, I am polite and I didn't want to, I'm sitting here. Again, about my approach and, and I haven't had incidents because I'm not coming off like a bad guy. I mean, I'm usually apologizing right off the bat for having to do what I have to do because I tell them, I have a job and I'm still scared. So it's just the, the nature of the beast right now. But I think a lot of them, because I'm nice and, and I explain it, you know, like a five-year-old. And so hopefully they understand and, you know, go somewhere where there's not a code enforcement officer.
Short question. Now I've forgotten what I'm going to say, but, um, do you think, yeah, now I remember, does, oh, I see more cars that OC recycle than I used to. Do you think the awareness of them being able to take certain recyclable items there and get paid for it has any influence on? Yeah.
It's a good thing, in my opinion, is residents are recycling instead of just-
Yeah.
It's a benefit for the district and CRNR, of course, but I think ultimately the goal is to have residents recycling their own recycling.
Thank you, sir. Good report. Hi. Fix this to item three, reinstating CalPERS health benefits.
Thank you, Mr. President. Diana Wick will be giving his report.
Good morning, President Schaefer and members of the board. The September 22nd, 2025 Board of Directors meeting. The board requested information on the potential of reinstatement of CalPERS health benefits and whether CalPERS retirement benefits can be provided to board members. Today I'll walk you through the legal requirements, excuse me, historical background, cost considerations and the options that are available to the board. Starting with retirement benefits, staff confirmed with CalPERS that current state law does not allow CalPERS retirement membership for special district board members elected or appointed after July 1st, 1994. This exclusion applies only to governing officials. District employees remain eligible and city council members, county supervisors are treated differently under this statute. Any change in board member eligibility would require legislative action at the state level. Turning to health benefits, the board does have the option to reinstate CalPERS medical coverage under PemCA. The district previously offered CalPERS health plans to board members until that coverage was terminated in December of 2016. This then triggered a mandatory five-year waiting period, so that, that period has expired. And the district is eligible to rejoin if the board elects to do so. So rejoining would require the district to adopt a new CalPERS resolution, identify board members as the eligible group, select a contribu- contribution method and contribute at least the CalPERS minimum, which for 20, for 2026 is $162 a month. To provide context, staff surveyed comparable special districts in Orange County and most of, most offer some type of board health benefit, although the monthly contribution levels range widely from roughly $149 to the low end, uh, to over $2,200 on the high end. This is just information, simply for comparison purposes, does not represent staff recommendation. Under PemCA, the district has two primary contribution structures to choose from. One option is the state-set PemCA minimum, which again for 2026, that's $162 a month. And that would cost approximately $126,000 over 10 and a half years of all five board members enrolled. The other option is the equal method, which allows the district to establish a flat dollar contribution. If the board aligned that amount with the employee benefit bucket, current monthly allowances range from $1,200 for employee-only coverage to over, uh, $2,100 for family coverage. Depending on the tier selected, the 10 and a half year cost would range between $816,000 and $1.44 million, subject to the number of board members who elect to enroll. Under the equal method, there are two additional policy questions that would need to be considered. If the chosen contribution exceeds the premium of the selected plan, the board would need to determine how any unused portion would be treated. And if the premium is higher than the district's contribution, board members would pay the difference out of pocket. I'd also like to clarify the assumptions behind the long-term cost projections in the staff report. Public agencies are expected to demonstrate that they understand and can sustain long-term financial obligations. So a 10-year cost outlook is standard budgeting practice for new benefits and healthcare commitments. This allows the board to evaluate not just the initial cost, but the ongoing financial impact, ensuring transparency and responsible long-term planning. In addition, the modeling assumes that all five board members may enroll. Once the CalPERS resolution is adopted, all board members are eligible to participate and staff cannot predict future elections, changing personal circumstances or individual enrollment decisions. Using all five board members reflects a conservative worst-case scenario consistent with district financial policies and long-range planning standards. Sorry, okay. Finally, uh, these potential costs are not included in, in the district's adopted budget for fiscal year '25, '26 or '26, '27. If the board chooses to reinstate health benefits, budget adjustments would be required either through reallocations within existing budgets or through an appropriation from fund balance. Drawing from fund balance would then result in an unbalanced budget. This concludes my report and staff is here and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. You felt pretty well.
I'm sorry, I'm not feeling my best today.
All right, questions for staff?
Well, I, I think you answered my question and that was, um, why there was a 10 and a half years study analysis in, in, in the, um, in the staff report. So, thank you for that.
I'm happy to kick us off since I prepared something for us to discuss.
Go for it.
Is it okay for us to do comments before we take public comment?
Um, I'd rather handle the-
Do our discussion for, for staff questions?
Then I'll go to public.
Okay, great. Okay, so I, I read the report super carefully and then summarized my thoughts in a executive summary printed in front of you guys. And pretty much, I, I completely, completely understand the purpose of like laying the foundation for the staff report. But I also felt that it was important to have something prepared for you guys. That is actually a realistic estimate of what we would be committing to. Of course, we don't know how elections will play out. I do feel that your records as incumbents does speak quite strongly. And then in addition, obviously I don't know personally if, um, the three of you would plan to participate. But I am also going off of the assumption that since you haven't participated in the benefits plan that we're roughly committing to one or two of us participating in the benefits plan. So that's just one of the assumptions here is number one. Number two is, I was struggling with the range, right? It's, it's a 10x multiple range that we were given in the staff report. Either 162 is the minimum or 1,200, um, which I, I'm just gonna jump off and say that would be the absolute maximum. And I actually do have a question for staff. Do we have to match the employee amount or are we okay to set our own range? Cause that's what I assumed we could do.
No, that's what this is for. This is for you to, to discuss and decide what that amount might be. I do, I do want to point out, um, as I, as I stated, that we don't know, um, we, it may appear that just one to two board members do want to participate. I do want to remind you that there is an election in 2026 and we have three, um, board seats that are up. And I'm sure that if, if they choose to run, they will be, um, you know, reelected those. But, but I, I do feel, I mean, it is my duty to point that out as well.
Yeah, of course. And I'll, I'll circle back to that point, too. So I, I really like, thought about this and looked into the plan costs. And I'm suggesting for the sake of practicality and being fiscally conservative, a range of 681 to 857. So on page two, I landed on those numbers. One is just the midpoint between, um, what full-time employees are getting and what the state minimum is. Another anchoring point could be if we wanted to cover the cheapest plan, that would be 857. And even the midpoint between those two ranges, 769, um, a month. And I like these numbers for a few reasons. It does also avoid this question mark of what we would do with surplus payments. And I also think it's just a good compromising sort of range of giving board members who need coverage, that sort of most affordable option, but it's not as burdensome as something like a $1,200, um, per board member per month. And so really any amount of number, really any amount of money, no matter how small, is going to look really big over 10 and a half years. But I wanted you guys to see at least even those numbers for these three ranges. And of course, just looking at it for what would the commitment be from like a one to three-year range? But I appreciate that this is a big long-term commitment and we should and will eventually know what we're committing to, to ensure we're planning ahead. And then just on a like policy clarification and financial operations, what I was ideally thinking would be the most efficient use of the time today would be like discussing if we're open to it at all, what would be the range we're comfortable with? And then I would like to hear more of a top-down analysis from staff, their recommendations for budget allocation. Like, I think it's a little bit premature to be handed all this information and then on top of that have to decide or give direction of how we would want to update the budget. And so if this ends up being like another study session and ensuring we're really, um, when it comes to how in the event, in a future event, a surplus would be handled or a deficit. And when it comes to a deficit, I was functioning under the assumption that it would just be taken out of our paycheck, the same way it does when you're a full-time employee, right? So say we approve a $600 plan, but I sign up for Kaiser, which is 850. That 250 deficit would just come out of my monthly stipend was the, was what I was, the, what I was functioning under that assumption. So, so yeah, I think in summary, in summary of my document, I think, um, it's nice to see that this is functioning under, you know, the regional norm of all the other neighboring boards. It is why I suggested it is, I'm aware that other, all the other entities in Costa Mesa have it. Also, speaking of future elections, I do think it's a valuable benefit to offer for recruiting future board members. This is a small personal note, but I want to ensure that I'm bringing, you know, the best possible use of my time and energy to this job and I do view this as a job. And so adding something like this, um, I think is a powerful sort of lever in recruiting and retaining talent, as well as people that will help us save money in the future and ensure our, our money is being spent with the highest impact. So I hope you guys will, you know, appreciate this sort of middle range. I'm really curious to hear, um, any other like thoughts and ideas you have. I also attached the actual like financial breakdown on, that would be, I guess, back of page two, um, including all the same assumptions from the staff report as well. So yeah, thanks.
Just one quick question then. You said that if we went with the, the 680 amount and the actual cost was 850, you would just take it out of your stipend?
Yeah, that's what I would assume we should make the policy.
And I, I agree that it should come out of your stipend. What happens if you have a month where you don't meet stipend requirements or, or there's a shortfall? Would you be billed directly?
Could we roll it over into the following?
Yeah, I, I was thinking that same thing.
Yeah.
But yeah, it's at some point.
Maybe we put a, a, um, caveat that says, um, post three months of stipends not meeting the minimum then. Like I do think when we're creating the policy, we should have every possible avenue like covered, even a surplus. But I think if we start conservatively, we can just cross those bridges as we get there, too.
I, I, I think I read that in, in your intent. Diana, do you know? if you look at the chart of the other special districts, I want to get elected to the Midway Cities. Are those directly paid amounts to whichever program that the directors are involved in? Or any of these districts have a bucket list where they get this compensation? The reason I bring that up, you had mentioned the equal pay amount in the bucket list. Do you know if any of these are given to those directors in that form? Or are they directly paid premium?
I do not know that, unfortunately. The transparency around this is very, I don't want to say shady, but they're not very transparent.
I guess that that's what you were gonna say. I mean, these are benefits that I'm sure other directors don't want to pass out too much. But, okay, so that's one trigger in my mind. One of the assumptions that I think we need to be careful with in whatever we do is there may be only two directors who need the program, but at the same time, the other three directors spend a lot of money every month for our medical programs. And now, a lot of times, there's an assumption that, oh, you're on Medicare, so everything's taken care of. That couldn't be any farther from the truth. I mean, I have to pay, and I know Director Ooten does. We have to pay for a supplement, we have to pay for a drug plan. We have a lot of, and it's expensive. And if the federal government doesn't fix whatever they've broken so far, I'm looking at double or triple premiums over the next couple of years. And I assume that the CalPERS premiums are gonna be affected in the same exact way. So we need to be careful on what we project budget-wise, because we're gonna have to maintain this, and it could become even more expensive. So I think that's one of the things, as you come back to us, that we need to be cognizant of. Let me go back to the bucket list thing for just a minute. So if we establish a minimum on the bucket list, and every director is afforded that minimum or that amount, okay? We have the choice then of taking that money and buying whatever plan we want to buy, or do we have to use the bucket list for the district's recognized plan?
So if we're going to go the CalPERS, adopt a new resolution, it would be a CalPERS health plan that you would choose, just like employees do?
So it wouldn't do any good for us old timers-
Oh, yes, they have Medicare rates as well.
It's just, it's a little more difficult to switch on a plan when you're on a supplemental plan that cooperates with Medicare. You know, you have to make sure you're in the open enrollment period. Now, there are some change-of-plan definitions that let you enroll at different times, but it's complicated, it's not that easy. So we can't just say, okay, every director's got 800 bucks a month. Go spend it the way you want, as long as you spend it towards medical coverage.
I might let Alan, I mean, I don't know if the board could elect to say, okay, we'll just get an extra $800 in our paycheck. That, I don't know if that is in alignment with PemCA.
And that's kind of what I'm asking. Counselor?
Mr. President, I'm sorry, I don't have an answer for that. It's a question that I wasn't prepared for.
If we come back with a more definitive approach to this bucket list idea, I'd be curious to see how that works.
Well, and I do want to say that I included the bucket amount in there just for reference, because that's what current employees, full-time employees, receive that. I wasn't necessarily throwing that as an option that the board get a bucket. Normally, you would just, I believe, set a rate like this is what the district would contribute towards. But I just wanted you to know that this is the amount that the full-time employees receive.
And in private industry, bucket lists are used pretty extensively. I mean, a lot of private industry says to their employees, well, if you don't mind, I'll use my wife as an example. When she was employed, her company offered her the bucket list because I had coverage through my employment. And that money was her discretion, she could use it for whatever she wanted. So all of those things factor into part of this, I think. Looking at this list, the benchmark list of the different districts, again, there's huge, I look at Orange County mosquito and Orange County sanitation and Orange County water, just to include them. But Vector and sanitation, they have 30-member boards, or 25-member, thank you. Does that, do you get the sense that that's a contributing factor as to why they don't offer it?
Well, I think for Orange County's sand district, I believe that most of those members are on, like Director Ooten is on this board. So I think that is a big factor there.
I was gonna say, all those members are either elected or appointed officials on another district. So you're not gonna duplicate, you're not gonna give-
And Mr. President, I can tell you something about Vector. They get $100 per month, that's the entirety of what they get. And some of them have to drive from San Clemente up to Garden Grove for that meeting in traffic jam. It's not a financial rewarding position.
Okay.
Well, is the policy that you've outlined directed towards CalPERS benefit-only, the health benefit?
Under PemCA, yes.
At this time? And do you know what that health plan is? I would be interested to see. I'm not interested in being a participating member here. I told my wife about it, and she said, just forget it. But I, like Mike, have, pay a premium. Part of my social security is the premium for the Medicare health plan. And then I have to buy a supplement. And those supplements vary all over the place. My wife did extensive research of those when her board that had provided us both with permanent life insurance became nil and void. So anyway, I'm not interested in being a participant in this program. But I do pay premiums for both the supplement and Medicare. And it's income-based, so. You wouldn't believe what it is, or could be.
I believe it.
So I would be interested in seeing the policy, not for my benefit, but I think the benefit of the board members that would consider being in this program.
Well, I do want to note that there is an attachment to the report with current CalPERS or the 2026 medical rates, and then-
Look at the attachment, so I appreciate that, I will.
Can I ask a clarifying question of staff? So my understanding is, I'm just gonna use a flat amount for the sake of math. Let's say we approve, board members can elect to have $500 a month towards a CalPERS plan only. And the way it works in my business is that money never hits the employee's bank account. We are the broker with the provider. And so what would, I would, or each board member would then elect not to participate or say, this is my choice that I participate in. And I do see the Medicare plans, but I understand it's probably so complicated for you guys to juggle your different sources. So then I would confirm with our benefits administrator that that's the plan I want to participate in. The 500 would go towards that plan directly. Like, they would pay it out to them just on my behalf. However, there's no redirecting the funds towards any other. It's not a benefits pool, is not what we're discussing, right? It's only, this amount can go here, use it or lose it, and you can only use it on these plans that were provided.
Yeah, and I understand that, but I also think that there is the alternative to the bucket list where you say, if you choose to use your bucket list for the CalPERS program, that broker situation, as you illustrated, would continue. If you chose not to participate and you want to do your own medical plan.
Oh, it being like a stipend?
Exactly.
Or a reimbursement?
It's not a stipend or a reimbursement, it's a benefit.
Yeah.
Straight benefit.
Yeah, we have an employee on Medi-Cal, and we reimburse him for covering it himself because of that very, the cost of Kaiser for him was so much higher than just sticking with his own plan. So is that something you guys would be interested in and discussing further? Like, having that as an option?
I want that as a discussion, yeah.
Cool, yeah, I'm all for it.
Clarify again, what is that, you want part of the discussion, clarify, please?
Did we include a bucket option where if the board member decides to use the CalPERS program, you would make those payments directly for the board member, okay? If the board member chooses not to participate and wants to purchase a plan on their own, then it becomes a benefit payable directly to us to be used for medical-
And that is considered revenue, then?
It would be considered a benefit revenue to the director who chooses-
Would I have to pay?
It would become a part of an income taxable event. So that's why I was saying maybe reimbursements, because you don't get taxed on your reimbursements. But like, once again, it sounds like we just need to know more about how that could function.
And I'll throw one more little option in this mix. Sometimes you know too much. As part of the program, as part of the decision-making, we could also say if that director chooses not to contribute directly to to the plan that they're already in or whatever, that we establish an HRA account for them.
Like an HSA?
HRA is a health reimbursement account.
Yeah, I would have to check with, so our cafeteria plan is run by a third-party administrator. Every year, we have to submit paperwork to maintain compliance with our Section 125 with the IRS, our Section 125 plan. And so everything you're suggesting, I would definitely have to run by them, because if-
I appreciate you saying that, and that's what I'm asking for, is let's make sure, if we're gonna do this, and obviously, we haven't offered any health benefits plan except for one short period with one director, and part of that was he paid for it himself. There was no benefit, it was just his ability to enroll and to get available coverage. So that, and that's obviously another option we could throw in the mix, too, for discussion. But that's kind of what I would like to see, are all those options, if they're legal and available. So thank you for saying that.
Well, I would also check two members. I'd like to see the data on two members, three members, or you've given data on five members.
You gotta understand, whatever amount you set for us today, we will come back with a financial analysis of all five board members. You gotta assume that 10 years from now, you all might not be here. So you gotta assume all five members-
I want the data. I hear your point. I'm asking for that analysis for the present time.
But I understand, but when we do our analysis, we do it for all five board members. We can break it down-
I want the analysis for two members, three members, and four members.
And five?
And five.
Yeah, not a problem.
And I understand, you know, what you're saying.
But we need from the board, what amount do you want us to-
Yeah, I was just gonna say, like, so what are you guys thinking about the ranges that we got? What do you feel is like a comfortable starting point, that we could at least send staff in that direction? We can always- I feel like the range they give us is really broad. So especially if we have to say, you know what, yeah, we are comfortable with this for the 10-year long-term perspective, even though we know that's gonna be a worst-case scenario. Yeah, I'm curious, what do you guys think about what they gave, what we have, what I gave? And then they can also guide us as to budget implications and creating the policy of surplus or deficit.
I would agree. I think staff should, you know, think this through with your input and give us their opinion on what your input has been.
Okay, so you like the, I think my range was 680 to 850.
As one option.
Great.
I think that's a good range. I think that you made a really good point, that it's important to attract good talent to local government agencies. And already, public service is hard to get into for most people, because if you work a nine-to-five job, this is not gonna be feasible for you. And so it tends to attract people who are self-employed, who are consultants, who are entrepreneurs, who probably need healthcare coverage. I probably will not be enrolling, because I get healthcare through my husband's job. But I would like to know that it's available to me if he loses his job, because he does work in a really volatile industry. As a midlife woman, I have a lot of healthcare needs, and I'm sure that that's probably similar to a lot of other women out there who are in their late 40s. So I think that it's important that we offer something that is going to make their time worthwhile, their investment of time worthwhile, their investment of just commitment to the job.
Midlife woman, you look like a younger-
I'll be 47 in a month.
When you talk about the range, Diana, that you had put on page four, employee only, employee one, employee two or more, are those ranges based on the selected options? Like, if it's Blue Cross, they have a gold and a platinum, is that why there's a range?
No, the range is for, is it just the employee? Is it the employee plus one dependent? Or is it the employee plus three or more dependents?
But it says employee only, 857 to 1426. That's based on the plan they select for coverage, right?
Yes, yes, so that is, yeah, the rate varies, there's HMO, there's PPO.
Which is typical of what these darn insurance companies tend to do.
Well, in my understanding, last year at a CalPERS training that I attended, is they are trying to get away from PPO completely.
Everybody is.
Could we get clarification? So we're, the board is considering just contributing to employee or elected official only, correct? Not family?
I think that's a good starting point, if you guys are comfortable with that.
Yeah, I think that's where we need to be at this point. Okay, there's no other comments for now, I'm gonna open it for public comment. Public comment, Ms. Lester, you're up.
Okay, I first like to start by saying that the benchmarking for local and special districts benefits for the other districts are not comparable to you guys. You guys are the only district on here that gets benefits that only pays for a select number of the demographic with a population of around 120, 20,000 people. Newport Beach, who is also split, Newport Beach pays for all of their customers' sanitary or trash hauling. So I don't even think you should compare that. And Irvine has between 318 and 328,000 people that they serve. I'm really taken aback by all of this. This district has never offered fully paid benefits, medical benefits for its directors. This is not a full-time job. You guys volunteer, three of the five of you have volunteered years of service to the community at large, but you have never felt entitled to benefits here. This is over a 20 or 30-year span. You unanimously appointed somebody who came in literally under three weeks of having served on a district wanting benefits. And she said, when she, Director Wright said, when she initially brought this up, that she can speak for myself- And she said, when she, Director Wright said, when she initially brought this up, that she could speak for myself personally. That would, this would have substantial implications for, for personal. Well, you as elected or appointed officials, it's not your job to promote your personal life. You're supposed to look out for the ratepayer and you're supposed to look out for the best interest of the district, and I don't see how this is doing that. In light of the escalating landfill rates, the escalating rates in general that are, the increases that are, are taking place over the next, through, I think it's projected through 2028. I also think it's incredibly reckless to compare a government agency to private sectors. It's like comparing apples and bananas, apples and monkey butts. It's like one has nothing to do with the other. They're completely different and they can't be treated the same. Um, it, it feels like. This is not in the best interest of the district, it's not budgeted. This executive summary, which I have to say is impressive, you hit a lot of things. It's also written as an assumption that you guys have all, somebody's talked to each other about who's going to opt in and who isn't. Or assuming over who takes it and who doesn't. And that's just not right. Um, I, I can't, I, I. I. All my years in human resources or multitude of companies. And this is, this benefits is something that you earn after you participate in something for a long period of time, which three of the five of you absolutely have. But financially, this is a horrible time to do something like this. And I don't think it's coming from a place of non-transparency. Because all these other places don't, that appear on this list of any benefits, they don't want to cough up the details. Because if the public at large got wind of the money they were sucking up on personal benefits for a part-time gig that's called public service. I don't think they'd be really happy about it. Um. Have staff gather the information, whatever you feel you need to do, but I think this is a bad idea. And you know, I've disagreed with a lot of you over many things over the years. Um, which I can appreciate because we shouldn't all feel the same way. But at no time did I ever question that there was a majority of people on this board that had the best interests of the ratepayers. And the best interests of the district in mind. I'm not sure I feel that way anymore. And the way you guys vote on this, I think is going to be really, really apparent. To see who cares about the financial stability of the district? And who cares about what's best for the residents at large and who only cares about themselves? Please prove me wrong, so I can come back and apologize to you at some point for, for voting against this. Please, I, I'm. I'm about to fire.
Thank you. All right, well, um, sorry. So we'll close public comment, seeing no one else wishing to speak. Uh. You promised to fill out a form after you speak. Based on your disability, go, go, go ahead, Rosemary.
For a minute, so.
Good morning, thank you for your time. Um, I, I am concerned about this particular issue. I do think that it's a significant benefit, uh, for such a small and niche district, I think it is quite impactful. Um, I do want to look at the longer term pool, allotted amount for the full board. Um, I don't think it fits in the budget, I don't. Allocation and particularly at this time, the costs to the district. So I do think that, um, maybe in the next, you know, three or five years, if this is something that the board wants to, to come back to. Might be more appropriate, but I definitely do not think that this is an appropriate use of district.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, then, public comments is closed. Um. Direction to staff, we're going to bring this back with the questions and things that we've included. Uh, one other thing I'd like you to blue sky a little bit. Is, we, we know what the costs are now, they're established. And what did you, these are rates for two years?
2026, the rates typically go up, oh.
Usually in November, I mean, October, November is usually when we see rate increases.
October is, uh, open enrollment, and so we usually, we know by August, September, they're, you, they. You know, anywhere from two to seven percent to, you know, it's not.
As you develop these numbers or as they come forward for what they're going to cost. Let's be cognizant about the federal situation and, and kind of pencil in what potential increases. Might be evident over the next couple of years, just so that we know. I don't know if that'll have any bearing on what we decided, but I'm, I want to see what, what it's going, what, what effect it's going to have on us. Okay? All right, nothing else? You guys have your direction? Do you want to bring this back when?
January board meeting?
Board meeting or study session?
I don't, study session, we have holidays coming up, I think it's going to be pretty tough.
I. That, is that okay with everybody?
Of course, yeah.
Anybody, okay?
But it's not an item we're going to vote on at that time.
Don't have to.
It'd be for additional staff direction, probably.
They'll be on item, you can ask for us more information, absolutely.
Okay, all right, um, let's move to item four.
Thank you, Mr. President, so as you know, uh, there is, the law continues to be changing, seems like every year regarding ADUs. And so staff believed it was appropriate to establish a policy that gives staff some guidelines on identifying ADUs and how to apply assessments to ADUs. And so we asked our district council, Ellen Burns, to draft a, a policy for the board's considerations. And we're just looking for comments today, um, and then we will bring this back to the citizens' advisory committee in January for their comments reviews. And then we'll bring it back to you for, um, adoption consideration, so I'll turn it over to, um, District Council Ellen Burns.
Thank you, Scott, Mr. President, board, members of the board. Uh, as you know, Scott has mentioned, the governor and the current legislature are very determined to make sure we have more affordable housing in California. And they've enacted a series of laws to, uh, help with that. Every city has a duty to provide for housing of, for all economic segments and ADUs are another means to provide affordable housing. Just very briefly, the definition of an ADU is an accessory dwelling unit. It's either attached or detached from a single family or multifamily dwelling. They must provide under the most recent law, it's just changed again. Uh, complete independent living facilities, including a kitchen and a bath. And it must be located on the same lot as an existing primary residence. An ADU, ADU must include permanent living, sleeping, eating, cooking and sanitation on the same parcel as the residence. A junior ADU is one located entirely within the, uh, single family resident. And, uh, may include shared sanitation facilities. Or it may have, uh, independent facilities, either way. Some ADUs must be ministerially approved, meaning the city has no discretion whether or not to grant them. Others may be, uh, granted or denied based on criteria if they meet certain tests. One test involves if, uh, they are entirely within a structure. And then those are required for the, the junior ADU, they have to share the, either share the facilities or have separate. Uh, and, uh, some tests require at least an 800 square foot minimum. But a lot of that discretion is with the city and we don't really have the discretion. We're on the receiving end, we, they approve or disapprove the ADU. It's our job to find out if it's, we have an ADU and how we treat it within our subject matter jurisdiction. So, our, the application to our district would be, um. We have to, um, identify when they're approved and then determine what we can require of the ADU. The biggest concern we have is capacity, uh. Scott, Scott has, uh, informed me, we have considered the capacity and we believe in the assumptions we've made. That we have enough capacity for ADU build outs if our projections are correct. And we believe they are. Uh. Capacity is usually involved with impact fees. And that's the most important way we are, uh, affected by this is that the, um. Our ability to collect impact fees such as fixture fees, connection fees or capacity charges are substantially limited by the legislature. Basically, we cannot charge for any unit less than 750 square feet. Um, and, uh, if it's over 750 square feet, we have to make sure our charges are proportionate. But it has to be built in, cooked into our rates. Uh, so we'll be fine, we'll always be fine tuning our charges to account for the ADUs. Uh, because the legislature believes an ADU is not a separate use. That's, you just keep that part in mind, it, it makes a little bit more sense. Another issue is, uh, on the construction, separate laterals. We, uh, we would prefer separate laterals for units, uh, generally, uh, but we cannot require separate units unless, uh, I'm sorry, separate laterals. Unless, um. It's proposed with a new single family dwelling, ADU with a new single family dwelling. And, uh, or if the ADU can be conveyed separately. Those are the only two situations in which we can require a separate lateral. Otherwise, we have to allow them to be on some kind of a common lateral. Sewer treatment is, uh, the other issue, we are allowed to charge for sewer, transportation and treatment. Of course, we don't do treatment, sanitation district does it. The sanitation district is subject to the same law. So, uh, none of us can, none of those entities can require for capacity fees. We can charge for treatment and transportation and things like that. So the difference might be, uh, you know, the line cleaning and rebuilding a pump station. Things like that, that would be, uh, maintenance as opposed to the, uh. ADU person, owner, uh, paying for a capacity, we can't charge for a capacity. We can't charge for those kinds of things. We can also charge for trash. So, um, you know, they generate trash and there's nothing in the law that prevents or talks about trash collection. So there's not going to be an issue there except to identify the ADU and separate it for, on the bill and put it on the assessment. So, uh, that's an outline of our ability to regulate. Uh, we've prepared an AR for you as a, uh, part of the study session, working draft, uh, with staff. You know, this will be a living document because this, this law is changing frequently. There's not only new legislation all the time, but, uh, you know, staff will need to interact with the city and find out things about, um. How, how we can get better notice of ADUs being approved and, you know, worst case scenario, we could do a Public Records Act request or something like that. But hopefully there's something more cooperative that we can do with them to where we, uh, know what we need to know. To keep track of who's moving in, who's creating new burdens on our system and figuring out what we can charge for and what we can't. That's kind of our starting point, um, and we welcome any questions.
Are we getting, are we getting notified now when the city provides us with ADUs that are approved?
City's doing a much better job of notifying us, uh, when ADUs are in the process.
What about, uh, uh, last night, the, at the, uh, planning commission, they approved two units from one lot. Two, two-story units from one lot, do we get notified about those also?
They're not building ADUs with that one?
No, they're, no, two separate, taking one lot, putting two separate units on.
So Mark informed me when we were talking about TESSA, that now they've added a full stop in the permit process at the city. We, it says you can't move past in the permit process until you go to the sanitary and Mesa water. And that's gotten our, I'm, I'm sure you know that, right? Actually, I was going to ask, how has getting ac, more access to TESSA been? Do you know if we made, um, any progress there?
No, I, I, I have to reach out to staff, I know the city manager has reached out to me and she put me in touch with the community development director. And I was going to have Mark and, and Robert reach out to her and kind of form that, that relationship and, and, and get better access to TESSA. Um, I haven't heard anything bad about it so far, so I'm assuming it's going well, but I'll get an update when Mark returns from vacation.
Great, yeah, as you guys remember from our liaison meeting, our staff was having a hard time with just transparency of, of the project statuses. Um, yeah, the policy looks great to me, I just wanted to bring awareness that the city is working on a pre-approved ADU program. Where they're going to have pre-approved, um, floor plans, layouts, vendors, so architects, GCs. And so any way that, I, I, I think it's a great concept, it's clearly to streamline the process. Um, it took me over a year to get all my permits. Um, which is really expensive for people, so any way that we could go out of our way to connect with their team about this program. That goes beyond, I think, the general like administrative policy for sure. Um, that looks great to me, I think we, we touched all our bases in the policy itself. But I know about this program and, um, would love to participate in it in any way we can.
Um. I thought I'd read in here something about, um. Something about costs that have to, um. Be submitted, and I'm not sure it's this staff report, but it caught my attention when I was reviewing, uh, the entirety of the thing. Some, something about, um. The, the costs have to be put on the tax rolls, you know, like we do, right now we, we submit. Do we submit individual, do we, is there on the tax roll, and I meant to look this up. Is there a charge for sewer service and a charge for, um. Um, the refuse service, are, are they separate? Um, and I, I've just looked through this and I can't find it, but, um. There was something in, in, in this agenda, in all of these agendas, that something has to be submitted. Or should, or recommendation that it be submitted through the, the, the property tax roll. And, um, if that's part of the, is it, is this a, is this a proposed recommendation by the state? Or is this an evaluation of the, of a state? Um, what, what is 140, is it a law?
That's, that's, those are our administrative regulations, those, those are internal regulations, so if you look at our, on our website, we have in our policy sections, it says admin regulations, there's 140 of those.
And, and it was interesting, two times in this report it said, you know, staff will present this to the, the CAC on January 14th. Is that because it's not part of their present work plan? Or, you know.
Well, it, no, because the citizens' advisory committee is, is stat, you know, they, they, they advise. And so any kind of new proposed policies or programs, we like to give it to the citizens, our citizens, to get their consent and feedback, and then we share that with the board.
I'm, I'm not against having it stated the way that it is. It, it's the first time I've ever seen it on, that I, that I remember on any agenda.
What was the rationale or what's, what is the rationale, you know? Where we can't charge impact fees if they're less than 750 square feet?
I think the general thought of the legislature is, don't treat these like a new use. This is, uh, we're not, we're, we're engaging in the fiction, this is just part of the regular residence and. It's just a legislative fix.
Okay, so they figured that if, if it's 750 square feet, they're just making a room addition on a, on a house?
It's just a policy decision, social engineering, it's not, there's no engineering basis to it or legal basis.
I've seen.
Just where they draw the line.
I've seen some separate ADUs that are 750 feet and less, I mean, it, it happens. And that, it just, that number just sort of stuck at me. Uh, so there is no rationale?
Not in the logic of the law.
Not a logical.
It's a political decision, really.
Actually, there's a lot of, uh, interest in, from, um, vendors that are making, um. Units that are, you know, pre-put together and you just put them on.
Just put them on, that's right.
And, and they're all different sizes.
They have to be a minimum of 800 square feet though.
Right.
Being ADU.
Oh, really? Yeah, okay. Well, I grew up in a 450 square foot house.
Okay, other questions for staff or for Alan? All right.
Will this be brought, when will this be brought back, back to us post the?
Depending on the, on the comments we receive in the CAC, we can probably bring it back in, in the January meeting.
Oh, cool, okay.
I, I, I think this is pretty cut and dry and looks like something we need to do. Okay.
Great.
For that. Oral communications and director comments?
I just have a, I have a quick comment. So I was sworn in a year ago, yesterday. And I just wanted to say this has been such a great experience. I'm so glad that I ran and that I won. And now that I'm serving, it really is an honor to serve. I want to thank the board for their support, for showing me the ropes. Thank you so much. You've really made it a great experience. And to the staff, you guys are awesome. You do an incredible job. The ratepayers and the citizens of Costa Mesa are really lucky to have you making sure that everything works. So just thank you so much.
How about me here?
Happy anniversary.
I would just echo staff. You guys are incredible. I mean, we get to interact with other staffs at other districts, especially in my role at SDRMA, and nobody compares to you guys. I mean, just look at the track record of the awards and the staff people of the year. I mean, we've got, what, three of them sitting here, right? The General Manager of the Year, a Board Member of the Year. That would be me. So thank you, guys. Happy holidays. I know it's.
I have one comment, actually.
But I'm done ranting. Thank you for all you do.
Well, I'd ask, I think, for a quarterly report, in the strategic plan, you know, there's five different years that, that we had, that staff had suggested and the board approved, that we try to meet some deadline. And so what I would, what I would ask, and I thought I had to ask, was some, some sort of a report on a summary, basically, it's a summary of what we tried to achieve in 2025 and what the status of the news.
All right, if there's nothing else, I will adjourn us to our board meeting next Monday at 4:30.